Kevin, if you have any attention, we'd like to call the planning commission meeting into session. We've established quorum, so we can begin. If there's anyone that is going to speak other than our typical city officials and planning commission that would like to stand up and I'd like to administer a note.
Anthony Ferrian.
Okay, Anthony Ferrian, do you promise to tell the truth to the best of your knowledge to this commission?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let me sit down now. Our first case on today's agenda is number 09-08, Castle Brook Stewart Street Apartments at 63 Stewart Street. It is a Title 41 site plan review. This looks like the city officials have already gone through the process of reviewing it, so I think we might begin with the city planner, Paul Loeb, if you want to go ahead and run us through this 41 review.
Sure. The project, I believe, Harry, RJ, and Nicholas, the three of you should have received site plans at the last meeting in order, just so that you have them in, so you can review them. The city administration has reviewed these, the site plans over the last two weeks. Mr. Ferrian's project was reviewed by the shade tree commission and approved on October 8th based upon the plans that were provided. There are general comments from police and fire chiefs. I think they're pretty standard in relation to their common concerns, request of putting lighting in the hallways or lighting in the stairwells, lighting in the parking areas for safety's sake. Chief Troxel's concerns relating to fire where the primary concerns were addressed by the fact that the property or the site is going to be fire protected with sprinkler system. So most of those, the fire suppression issues have been addressed. Mr. Paskey reviewed it for code and zoning. It meets zoning. It did not need any variances. All of those setback issues, et cetera, are addressed and are fine. They have already made adjustments, and John has a copy of the revised site plans that reflect the issues that he had with parking. So they have addressed that. I do not believe they have addressed the documentation of that 16th parking space off-site yet. That would likely be a condition that would be needed to reviewed unless Mr. Ferrian has that. Tony, if you want to come up, you're welcome to. And then, as far as those issues, everything is pretty standard. The second page has more detail on things that the public works department will need to verify that it meets code. I think those are pretty straightforward as well. I provided this documentation to John Valentour, Mr. Ferrian's architect, last Friday, so that he should be aware of these issues and be addressing them for us. But for the most part, a lot of the concerns were about where infrastructure was shown on the plans, and Mr. Andy Stone, our public works director, made a few comments and adjusted things physically on the site plan, and we've given that to Mr. Valentour so that they can change the plan to reflect where the physical infrastructure actually lies. So, that being said, I think it's...
I see it also addresses floodplain issues. It's elevated up.
Correct. It is elevated. It meets Athens City floodplain Title 25. It's good on that. It's got the venting, the elevation, lowest floor, et cetera, is adequate.
Okay. So we're talking about 16 rooms, or the two lots are combined or will be combined, I assume? Is that the way it works? I see you already got the houses down, and I'm told by John you've got a demolition permit, which is good, too. All right. Three stories.
The one comment by chief mayor, I don't believe based upon code it is required, and I think this should be more considered a general comment relating to the sidewalks being placed away from the curb. I don't believe city code, I couldn't find anything that states that that is within code, that that's a standard with how we do sidewalks. I think that's a valid point, that maybe we do want to be considering down the road when we're saying, "How do we want sidewalks to look in the city of Athens?" And that is logical, that we would want to have a buffer strip between the street and the sidewalk. But in this situation, I don't believe that there's anything code-related that we can, through the Title 41 process, that we can mandate that.
No.
But just so you're all aware of that.
That's existing sidewalk, right?
Correct.
As well, so...
Right. And you can see on the site plan, there is sidewalk on-site itself, wrapping around the building. There is a sidewalk for the tenants.
To my knowledge, we don't have any standards on that.
That's correct. That would be my impression, too.
And John, you didn't have any other comments after the initial review and just the 16th parking spot?
No, he's, uh, he had, the parking on one side came into the side yard setback by three foot. They adjusted the size of their parking spaces on a couple of them, so that it now complies. And the 16th parking space, they're going to deed one of them, or one of them needs to be deeded from the property that Tony owns on 6 mil iron. And we did go down and verify that there is one space available for him to deed on that property for this one, so it is okay to do that. We do not have the actual paperwork for the deeding yet, so that would have to be a condition. He'd have to provide that to us at the time that he submitted for the building permit, and he wouldn't get it until he did.
Okay. So between you and Paul, what you're telling me is that any approval of this has to be contingent upon the changes that Andy suggested, which are mere just locations of utilities and the 16th space.
And the 16th space, the deeded parking space, yes.
What about the, are they separate parcels now?
Yes, and I'll have this parcel together.
They'd have to be tied together, yes.
I just, I just figured when I had, had the parking, once this is approved, I'll have the parking place deed restricted, and at the same time have the attorney go ahead and combine the two lots together. If that's okay with you guys.
Makes sense. Any other comments by planners?
6 mil iron.
It will mirror your existing project that's across the street?
Yes. Yeah, same elevation, same, same look.
Okay. There is any other further discussion? Would someone like to put this to a vote?
I move that we accept the plans through the Title 1 site plan review. With the conditions, of course, that we stated in terms of the deed restrict, putting the parcels together, degrading the 16th space, coordinating with the public works director for the locations of the utilities as per plan. And I think that covers it all.
I think, yeah, there's three. I second that.
Okay. Do you want to add anything, Tony?
You know, I understand this is a process, and I understand that this is a planning commission. The only real problem that I ever seem to run into is any kind of cooperation from the city works department. We tried, oh, I'm sorry, we tried several times to try to address some of these issues with them and couldn't get any coordination with these people at all down there. And, you know, Paul just kind of put this on my plate today, and I tried, my architect and I tried to spearhead a lot of these problems way before this and couldn't get anybody who wanted to talk to us. Tried to set up appointments down there, too. And it almost seemed like nobody wanted to be accountable for any, any kind of anything the way I kind of saw it. It was, and it was a little frustrating to me and that, you know, that this is a planning commission, and they are a vital part of the process. And it almost, it seemed to me that I had to direct the, where the sewer is because of my experience of where it is from the other properties, the storm sewer. I knew exactly where it was because we, within conjunction with the city, put that storm in. And I'm just, you know, kind of glancing over some of this stuff, and, you know, it's like, wow, I wish I would have had some cooperation from these people when I asked for help before, and it just seemed like nobody wanted to cooperate with me, you know, nor did they want to cooperate with my architect. So, I mean, I know it's a process, but that's the only issue that I see. John is incredibly helpful, but I can't get any coordination down there with them and any kind of help when I ask for it, and that always seems to be a problem with me. And I don't, you know, that's, that's really the only comment that I have.
Okay. I assume with your demolition, I went by it to look at the site. I was kind of surprised the bulldozers were there. I assume you did all the oop stuff and made sure all the lines were placed. Okay. So you had some data from that, obviously. Okay, what's something we'll look into in terms of administration?
So these revisions on the RBC drawings had nothing to do with your conversations with the city? These are revisions based on...
No, actually, we tried to get with the city before these, when this was being set down on paper.
Okay.
And couldn't get any kind of coordination or cooperation from them until, I guess, Paul stepped in, and he got some cooperation from them, so. And it was frustrating to my architect, and, you know, and that transmits over to me, and then, you know, then I get kind of frustrated because, you know, we're, and I do understand it's a process, but maybe just a little bit more cooperation, a little more coordination between the water department and...
Well, I think the key is that you want to go through, you know, either the person that's going to be reviewing the code, John Paskey, or the planner first, and I think he's going to be able to get you in contact with the proper channels. I think it's harder to kind of just go out there and try to be like, "Well, I need to know where sewers are, contact the sewer." It's something that they can sort of, you know, when they sit down and meet with Andy Stone or other departments regularly, you know, they can sort of get these, these issues out there, you know? And then it takes it off of you, it puts it onto somebody else that, where that's their actual role. So, go ahead.
And one of the things we're trying, we are trying to work behind the scenes is try getting our GIS coordinated. This is one of the issues right there, is that we have a lot of information that's, you know, on hard copy plans that don't, aren't reflected in the GIS. So there's a little bit, we're working on that. This is one of the issues we have.
No, I understand that, I really do. It's just that it seemed like I had to tell these people where everything was because they don't know.
Well...
So, and I only know because I was there and did, you know what I mean? I know where the stuff is, and so we put it down and set forth where, where I knew it was because nobody else knew where it was.
Okay.
Or maybe they knew and just didn't want to disclose that to me at the time. So there's always that possibility.
I really don't think so. Tony, I think you're coming at the perspective, the existing one that he has, I don't know if you've gone down there or not, is across the street. And that was funneled, channeled through, approved prior to Title 41 taking effect because dirt had been moved even though the building had not been constructed and erected. And if I may share, Tony, there were multiple issues with some of the infrastructure being placed down there, and you shared with me your frustration. This should preempt that. Now that you have this review in advance that says, "This is where it needs to be and these details need to be shown," this next construction period should go very smoothly because it'll all be on the plans in advance. So, again, I see the merit of a Title 41 process.
Okay. Well, we have vote out. There's all those in favor, unless there's any further discussion.
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, well, thank you, Tony, for...
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Next, there's the only case today. We do have a couple items of communication from our last meeting that have been carried over. Number one is the review, request regarding B2D rezoning that was originally brought forth by Mike Smelter, representative his. I think where we left that, we had Christine Fogg from city council had requested that the planner provided memo with his sort of feeling and professional opinion on the rezoning of the B3 area to B2D. Do you have something to prepare that you want to share with the commission?
I do, yes.
All right.
I did a few things. John and I issued a draft of a memo. One, reviewed the differences between the B2D and the B3.
Thanks.
Two, updated from the last time that was done. I think it was in your packet last week, or two weeks ago. And that was done back in 2004, and there have been some changes to the zoning code since then. So, John updated for that. The other thing I included in this packet is just a, what the comprehensive plan states about Uptown Athens, which does seem to support the rezoning. It is my opinion that I think a rezoning of that north end of Court Street is valid based upon this situation. What I would like to see, or my, ideally what I would like to see is bringing that entire neighborhood under the same ordinances so that we do have the same type of look, feel, and image throughout the entire corridor of Court Street. As a historic district, that does seem logical to me, that we don't have different requirements for signage, different requirements for parking, different requirements for heights and things like that. As soon as you cross State Street, in my mind at least, there's not much difference between the north and the south of State Street, and so we should bring those both into conformance. I do know that there are always concerns about these changes. I did provide a second option if rezoning is a concern, and one would be to, the option would be to create a parking overlay for that district. A lot of this issue does have to do with meeting commercial parking requirements for businesses. If you do a, if you walk Court Street 8 to 5, 8 to 6, Monday through Friday, you're going to see that there are, that there is ample parking available on street, on the north end of Court Street, as well as on West Union, from Port all the way to High. There are meters everywhere there. If you just do it any time of day, you're going to, you're probably going to count 20 to 30 open parking meters right there. West State, excuse me.
West State.
So I, in my opinion, requiring parking off-street for those, it actually negatively impacts the city's revenue stream because you can park off-street for free as opposed to putting a quarter into the meter. And in times of budget, budget issues like this, it seems like this an easy way to at least bring in some additional funding into the city. And I believe that parking as, providing parking for commercial businesses just generally is not the best use of that land if we can fill in some of those holes and get the entire run of Court Street looking like, like it does from Union down to State. I think that's a good thing for our Uptown business district. And I believe if you look at the second page where it shows the changes, in most situations, the B2D is more restrictive.
Respect the signage, I see.
In respect to signage, in respect to...
Uses.
Uses. If you look at the setback requirements for the B3, I think that's actually, has a negative impact when we're trying to, when you want something to look like a downtown business district to require those gaps, those 10-foot gaps, those 15-foot gaps for side yard setbacks.
Yeah.
The signage requirements, smaller signage would be included in that.
I see wall signs are actually larger, it looks like, but...
10%.
There are 40%, but I think that's probably because the faces of the buildings are smaller. It's probably on the standard B3 buildings.
Well, I know this, what the city council wants is a vote by the planning commission, whether it's the fourth or the fifth or 10th, so I'm going to put it up to a vote.
Well, I...
If there's not further discussion.
Mayor, you sent me an email.
Who did?
The mayor asked me about a study that was done a while back on a number of parking spaces. I wasn't able to find that, but based on the minutes, they went to the planning development committee back in May of 2007. It looked like there were about 70 parking spaces that this was a change or that could be used.
Could change, yes.
And my other recommendation, I was talking to Paul, was I think before any recommendation is made to council is that, and I, the finalization of that typo between the B2D and the B3, and I think, did that go through the other night or through...
No, it went to a public hearing.
Public hearing.
And it probably should end up on the, it probably should be changing as an ordinance sometime in the next month. First reading would be next meeting, maybe in session.
I think that's very imperative that that change is made, maybe before any recommendation is even sent forward, because it could affect some of these buildings.
Okay.
Or it could be made with that addition, you keep asking for this.
We'd save money, send us $25 a page to change any part of code from there.
RJ?
Yeah, I had a couple questions. In terms of the negative impact, let's see, one of my close here. If you, you can increase height by taking the commercial parking and, and using residential, or there's still the possibility of height increase on structures down there?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so...
That possibility exists today, though.
Right, but...
All you have to do is secure parking anywhere. That's one of the concerns.
At the last meeting, that one of the speakers said that that was not possible. So, I mean, that is possible.
It's always possible to build up or to tear down and to rebuild.
Right.
That possibility exists today as well.
I think some of the concerns that I've heard from a couple people was the increase, if, if additional height was created in some of these buildings for residential use, that there would likely be a resident, a vehicle spillage onto the, the streets of, like, the near north side. Where would the parking go there? Second concern that someone brought up was...
Residential parking would still be required, period.
Required, yes.
At one, one parking space per bedroom, as nothing with city code in relation to residential would change. If you don't have residential parking, you're not going to build up and put residential up there. You can't do it, period.
Okay. So, conceptually, if there's 75 commercial parking spaces that could be turned into residential, the concept there is that at the max, we could probably see 75 more bedrooms somewhere in there. And again, that doesn't, I look at some of the locations there, and some people probably will not get rid of their commercial parking because it behooves them to have it.
Right.
It becomes an economic choice for any of these members. Not that I'm arguing one way or the other.
Right. Do you think also, though, that when you talk about the commercial parking aspect, that maybe some of the revitalization of the north end of Court Street has taken place because there was a lot of off-street commercial parking available that made things easier for people to, to go to these offices or stores, restaurants, what have you? So you could maybe argue just the opposite, that, you know, that, that commercial parking has actually been a benefit.
I, I don't believe, offhand, I would say no. I haven't heard any commercial business owners say that requiring parking is a benefit to them. To me, it would be, if, if you think it's a benefit to have parking off-street, there's nothing in the code that says you can't have it. This gives, this would give you the option of utilizing parking for other purposes and getting parking on-street where we've got meters that would be, that would add to the city's coffers, which would be a good thing in light of current budgets. So I'm not aware of that. I would bet that there are several, if not, if you've got parking and you like having on-site parking, you may not want to give that up, and that would be an option they would have. So, I would, in my mind, that should be up to the property owner to make that decision, what they think is best for their business. Again, in my, in my opinion. There are other ways to look at it, I suppose.
Paul, you had a comment?
Well, you look at, I think it's the parking on the corner of State and Congress. I think that would be Lambor's parking, which is technically in the B2D. So technically, that could turn into residential parking if somebody chose to do it. But obviously, you know, you know, the merchants in the business decided, have made a choice saying, "Rather than do this, we do, we keep our commercial parking." Again, the 75 in play, which is, again, is anecdotal from the notes from the, you know, minutes. I suspect not all of them would turn into residential. I suspect a certain fraction of them will, but I don't, you know, that's up to the individual owner of the property saying, "I want to develop residential." And then the question, of course, is, do we want more residential uptown philosophically? I mean, it goes back and forth. Will that make it quieter? Will it make it more vibrant? Now, this is a, this is a call, this is why we're here, to decide this. One of the points of order, I'd be interested, if we're going to revote on this, should we actually pass it through, put a public hearing in place? In theory, most zoning changes require some kind of public hearing. Now, it's been done before. It's been done, I think, at least twice, to my knowledge. But Harry, do you know how many times we've gone through a public hearing on this? I know at least, it's, it's been done, okay, both on this level and the council level. Do we need to revisit that? And that's as procedure. And I know that's kind of a stickler, but it's something we might want to see aired out again. So we hear, because we're just five people up here.
I think that would be a great idea, just from the standpoint that this has been such a tennis ball going back and forth, that, you know, maybe to just put the nail in it and finalize the whole thing, that, you know, we just give everybody an opportunity to vent their spleen there and then, then make, make a recommendation from that.
I realize that there's no guarantee it's not going to go through another volley, as you say, as tennis ball wise. I mean, we may have a public hearing, like throw it to council.
Yeah, I think at that point, that really council doesn't have too much ground to stand on as far as kicking it back here again, that, you know, you've had, you've done everything, you've exhausted everything necessary on this end, and, and there's just, they, we put their feet to the fire and make them make a decision finally.
Okay.
I think that would be, you know, helpful for the business owners uptown, just as much as everybody else, is just to eliminate all the, the options of further discussion, further lack of knowledge on the part of council, just to get it all out and, and be able to take it to council and just say, "Here it is, now make a decision."
Okay. Not to speak for council, but having been on council.
Sure.
You have several options. You could bring it up, vote it down. You could put it through committee and let it die in committee, which is, as you see, starts at the local level, goes all the way up to the federal level. It may never leave the planning and development committee. It'd be nice to say yes, which I think is probably where it ended up most of time. I don't think there's ever been a clear vote. It just hasn't been addressed because...
Well, I think, yeah, and I think at that point, then, it's a matter between the council and the voters. You know, do we want to get this thing done and, and make it a front burner issue and just make a decision now and...
I realize that we're in an election cycle right now. If we put a public hearing in, it's not going to occur after the election. Not that there's any contest, except for one ward, I'm aware of that, but...
Now, is this something, this is where our legal expert, Pen Lang, might come in handy, but does the city council have to vote on a zoning change? Like, are they the only?
Yes.
It can't be like a, sort of a, a vote or something like that?
You mean like a ballot initiative?
Yeah, right.
A referendum. Now...
I don't know.
No, actually, okay, a referendum would be from, if you're talking about something from, it would come from the grassroots. There have been occasions, I know from my side of town in Morris Avenue, those used to be R2 duplex areas. It was, there is a signatures brought up through, on the grassroots level to turn these into single-family housing. Again, it's still, to make it law, you still have to go through the legislative process. I mean, there could be a groundswell, everybody saying, you know, "Vote this way or that way," but still, the law has to be changed through council.
Okay.
And they, they have to vote, or they give a status quo and don't have to vote, or they can vote it down, depending on their will.
Well, I think, too, a public meeting might also really kind of register how much people are interested, you know, from, from a non-business standpoint. I mean, we've heard smatterings of like, "Well, I'm concerned about quality of life issues from the near north side," you know, is to, to give these people the opportunity to have a, to be in front of a forum where if they're that concerned, if they're that interested, that they could come up here and, and add to the, to the discussion.
Would that be at this level or city council level?
Be at our level, right?
That way, what I heard in the discussion was, then, that way, we've done a public hearing at this level. It doesn't obviate their process for having a public hearing when it gets to councils.
But in RJ's words, we... But in RJ's words, we feel as if we've done all we could at that point.
Yeah, I, I would like to see the planning commission just demonstrate once and for all that we've just done everything, you know, through, through five recommendations. This would be the fifth, I think, that, that we've done everything we could, that, you know, there's always going to be one new face on council. So, you know, just to eliminate any type of, you know, validation for not voting on the issue.
Okay. I would actually move that we assign a case number to that, if that's the case, if we're going to start it all from scratch.
Are you good with that?
I'm, I'm fine with that. So that's fine with the public hearing. You're fine.
How about a case number and a public hearing?
Sounds good.
I move we have a case number signed to this, so we have a benchmark, or at least a, a tab in the file saying this is when it occurred.
I say that.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing next meeting?
No, we have to give it a certain amount of days. How many days?
I thought it was just two weeks.
Can you check on it?
Is it 30 days?
No, I thought it was-
We can check on that, but-
Will you check on that?
I think you're correct. I think it would have to be two meetings from now, so that would be the third Wednesday in November.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the time factor, I mean, it's gone on this long. We may as well, may as well make one stab at doing it right one last time.
Should we make sure that students are in session and that they haven't-
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Gone home for the end of the quarter.
If we can fit it in.
It's going to be tight.
Yeah, it will be tight.
Say one other comment. You brought up the parking spaces, availability and what have you. I mean, I have no blinders on. This was brought to us by a property owner in the area who indeed is probably looking to pursue having some additional rentals.
Because they already rent on one of the floors already, right? So.
And the intention, I think, is to build upward and add more.
That would be, yeah, and that's what I would assume that was going to be happening.
And, and again, there are circumstances where people bought remote, as Wharton, Mr. Wharton was here last time, he bought remote parking on High Street to, to, to fill the need of his places for the residential. And that's an option as well for any property owner there who decides to do this. You know, I think we have the, the next question we have to look through again, with Title 41 or any of these types of construction, would we have the infrastructure to deal with the growth? And that's further down the line, as people come with plans. Again, we're taking, we have a recommendation from the planner to turn it. And, you know, yeah, we, we're buying his expertise, so we have, we should take it serious consideration.
Sure. And Paul's laid out a, a great plan for it and opinion, and, yeah, I think that would be augmented by, you know, if there's any residential concern from the near northeasters there that, that adds to the discussion and adds to, you know, the information that we have to make the, the final recommendation.
All right.
Okay.
There's no further discussion on the B2T zoning. The next item, also a carryover from our last meeting, was a request from city council to amend or remove section prohibiting vegetable gardening in Athens city code. This was also something that had some little homework involved in, was seeing if the mayor could talk to the committee responsible, but to redraft this one more.
I never got a response.
Okay.
I doubt that I tried hard.
Time is appreciated. John, what is this, you distribute?
What I just handed you was, kind of what we were talking about last week, our last meeting, and the proposal removal, amendment of sections prohibiting vegetable gardening in Athens city code, and adding it into, well, currently, it's in conditionally permitted uses, number three, and going back, looking at the old code, and putting it back into the permitted accessory uses, and adding item number nine, which is what you'll see there, and I, gardening domestic animals, et cetera, gardening, the raising of vegetables, fruits or flowers, and the keeping of domestic animals exclusively for the use of personal enjoyment of residents of the premises and not for commercial purposes. So it'll become a conditional use, and it's really just kind of putting back in what was in there a long time ago, eliminating farm animals, as it stated before, kind of cleaning it up a little bit more with today's society and smaller lots, and adding the fruits and flowers part. So that's, that's what I just recommended there. And it would, as the other one did before, would allow gardening to be considered an implied permitted accessory use in all residential code sections and anywhere ground floor residency is permitted in the business zone. So.
Okay. You have a copy of that? Yes. And I do believe there's a section in code about nuisance animals, so if it ever got to a problem, there is a mechanism, I think, in Title IX someplace.
Yes, the old section was, it's on the third page I hand you, item number one on the very upper left, where the gardening farm animals on the last page, where it used to be in the code many years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I kind of thought this was sort of a Back to the Future thing, whereas it felt like it was in there as a permitted, and it was moved, and we're just sort of putting it back, but cleaning up the language.
Right.
So that, years down the road, someone can just do the same thing. Now I can't tell.
No, I can't.
I'll copy down. The gardening would not be for commercial?
Yeah, this one now particularly, or specifically removes that.
Okay. One pointed out, the amendment, it says 20, Title 44, it's actually 23.
Paul just pointed it out to me, too. I copied it off the old one, so yes, it is 23.04.01.
Okay. Now, again, do we want to put this as a public hearing? Do you think we're going to need to do that? I know, I'm killing you. I'm just trying to follow the process.
I don't view this as a substantial.
It's not a rezoning. Okay. Just a change of condition.
We did have a public hearing, well, we didn't, city council had a public hearing for Title, right?
Yeah, that was for the other section, yeah. The B2.
Yeah, this doesn't seem as, okay, is this seen, I guess, without taking a vote, is there, we, we can't even do that, but my question is not vote-based, but this is, this seems to be the right intent from our last meeting, what was discussed, so if that is the case with everyone, I'd like to put this item up to vote.
Oh, just real quick, did that affect fencing that we talked about, as far as like if people start to put up fencing around, if they was in like the front yard?
It still would be, I mean, it's still not allowed by code. It's still, you have to seek a variance to put up a fence in your front yard.
Yeah, if it's in the front yard, yes. I think that some will investigate farther in the future, the fencing part of it, but this will keep everything the same.
And again, the quality of the fencing, so that it's like, not something to get hurt kids or things of that nature?
Okay, the fencing would be something-
Fencing is still permitted in a rear yard, and it doesn't-
Well, the rear, yes. But not in the front. The front is where I was concerned about.
It's not, right now, would have to go to a variance. If somebody wanted to put a garden in the front yard and put a fence around it, they'd have to get a variance for it.
So in other words, they could have a garden, they couldn't have it fenced in the front yard?
Correct.
Okay. And we still, I see the section part, second part that was proposed, is, of course, is something about weed, not just weeds, but that's further down the line.
That's further down the line, yes.
We have to agree what that means.
Again, this wouldn't be for commercial purposes.
Yes. From what I understand, again, it's for personal enjoyment of residents' presence and not commercial purposes. And again, I think when this was brought to us, they implied that there's, you know, you can't have commercial activities in an R1 anyway, but in theory, you can, because it is a rental commercial, then you're into the blur at that point. I think it's well, I think it would work.
Yeah, I think it's well, okay.
It might get modified by council.
Always could, it may not even, maybe get tabled in committee. It'll probably get thrown back to the same committee that sent it to us. Okay, well, so I, I do have out there a vote. Is there a second?
Oh, you had a motion.
I did have a motion to vote. It was a long-winded and ended in that, but without much-
I'll second.
Okay. More discussion, I guess, is the question. Do you like it? Harry, do you like it?
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. There's no further discussion on that item. We have our reports from our illustrious city planner and director of development and enforcement. Enforcement thing, someone brought that up to me the other day, they thought that seemed delicious.
Yeah, your title.
I'm not sure what else you would call that.
Might be a good name.
That's where your building department name comes in. It's a kinder gentleman.
That's development.
Exactly. It's like development and enforcement, it's both. So, but if we can start with whoever wants to go first, I guess.
I can start first.
Okay.
I just have one thing I wanted to discuss this afternoon, and it does relate in some way to the rezoning of the north end of Court Street.
Thank you.
But I wanted to begin the conversation with the planning commission, and I guess we keep this in dialogue for a while, and with the long-term goal of getting something adopted. The north end of Court Street as a whole, as you can see from this Athens Messenger article from 1982, was listed, and you can see the boundaries, as part of, as a national historic place, in the, that was December 9th, 1982, so in the 2027, 26 and a half years since then, the city is not, we haven't done anything as a city to confirm and to encourage the preservation and the look and the feel of that historic district. Our comprehensive plan recommends that we create a historic preservation district overlay, as well as apply for what's called a certified local government, which is a process done by the Ohio Historical Society for, it is a grant. One of the things it does is, as certified local government, the Ohio Historical Society puts available grant monies for communities that go through this process to do, to get funding to restore historic neighborhoods, to, to reinvest in those neighborhoods, grants for buildings, to refurbish them and things like that. As part of the requirements of that, the big requirement is the adoption of a historic preservation ordinance, and I've included some documentation on that in this packet. It seems to me that even though any building or any district is registered by the national, as a national historic place, or even a, for a national historic building, that does not give that building any protection whatsoever. It can be redone, refurbished, demolished, anything can be done to that building that could be done if it wasn't registered. And so registration does not give any protections to our uptown district that we are doing any preservation of it, any, demonstrating any concern for it. The uptown business districts, or the uptown business association supports this change, from the communications I've had with them, they are working right now to raise monies to get more street scape improvements done, so that we can put in benches, put in tree grates, put in tree guards around the street trees uptown. But what we don't have is anything formal that says, let's, let's review how facades look uptown. Let's try to find money for grants so that we can get better-looking building facades uptown and things like that. So this is something, not only is it in compliance with the comprehensive plan, but I think this is really important. When you look at the list of cities in Ohio that are already doing this type of thing, I think we're falling behind a lot of these cities. A lot of our population centers, as well as small towns, have already done this. City of Mansfield, for example, has been involved with this since 1985. City of Oxford's been doing this for over 10 years. City of Oberlin's been doing it since 2001. Larger cities as well have been doing this, Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, Dayton. I believe Youngstown's on this list, and Toledo. And I just think this is something that would, is extremely important for the city of Athens that we recognize and that we start paying attention to the historic, to the historic culture and the, and the historic buildings in our community. So, this would be something, as a general rule, it would, city council ultimately would adopt the ordinance. You would then have a historic preservation committee similar to a planning commission or similar to a shade tree commission, that once we have adopted and recognized historic districts, then you may, you may develop certain design standards for those, for doing work in that district. You're not saying that everything done on Court Street needs to look like Court Street did in 1930. What you're saying is that any new projects, any new facelifts or anything like that, need to be harmonious with the look and feel of Court Street as it exists, and try to add to that look and feel, so that we have a more attractive, more better-designed uptown business district, so.
Paul, you have a question?
So we knew, do need to establish a start preservation board, that would be a-
That would be included as part of the ordinance.
Okay.
Right, it would be built into the ordinance, correct.
Did, why, I guess, why do you have to form another commission, and why wouldn't it be just, it's similar to like Title 41 Site Plan Review, sort of tacked on to an existing commission?
Well, generally, with, with most of these committees, and it's, the recommendation, this is what the Ohio Historical Society, their best practice is to have this type of a committee.
Okay.
You want to get a, a committee for a city of Ath, city of Athens size, probably a committee of five people. You would want to focus on probably, if you can, you want somebody who is knowledgeable in historic preservation, whether that's a local historian, planner, somebody from the Athens County Historical Society, history professor at OU, somebody like that, an architect, possibly an attorney, or a, a business owner or a land developer, or somebody like that who, who also has concerns for these types of things. It's usually how you want to have that committee established. You don't just want to have, you know, just say, five citizens who may or may not have any background or education or understanding of some of these issues. So you want to make it a professional committee, just like you would a planning commission, just like our shade tree commission is. I don't think I'd be fit to serve on the shade tree commission based upon my limited knowledge of, of nature of trees. So that's why you would want to have its own committee. And I'm sure in a city like Athens, there's, there's 20 to 50 people who are well-qualified to serve on a committee like this.
Okay.
So that's why you would want to do it as such. Usually, then, as part of a Title 41 Site Plan Review or a PUD review, they would go, they would, if you're in one of those historic districts, you would have to meet with that committee to confirm that, and they would issue a certificate of appropriateness stating that the design and the plans are appropriate for that district, and that would come as a recommendation that would be given to the planning commission, just like the shade tree commission does, to help you make deliberations as you approve a PUD or as you approve a Title 41 project.
Okay. This is, looks like you gave us some literature to read there.
There's a lot there, yeah. And like I said, I, I don't think this is something we want to do, there's no decisions I'm asking for today, but I do think this is really important, and I, I think there's a discussion that as a city, we need to, we need to start moving in this direction, specifically with the uptown business district, to try to preserve that for the sake of the community, for the sake of, you know, all the visitors that come into town, that we've got something that looks good up there, and that we know that we have it looking good because we've got it built into our ordinance and into our code process to guarantee that we have those types of, that, that project going on.
Okay.
So, that's all I have.
Any questions for the planner?
I, I would like, since you are the planner, if you could give it, come back to us whenever with the steps?
Oh, sure.
In terms of the process?
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's, we somehow have to become a certified local government and responsible.
That's, that's just an application process, but to be a certified local government, there's requirements upfront, and one is that you have a historic, you have a historic review committee that is built in through a historic preservation ordinance. So those are usually, those are the two big steps. These are also requirements that we would need if we wanted to be, to join the Main Street project done by Heritage Ohio, to have a Main Street coordinator for the uptown district or something like Nelsonville is doing right now. These are requirements that you have to have built into that to even apply for those. And a lot of historic preservation grants have these requirements built into it, too. But yeah, I'd be happy to give you steps.
All right. There's no further questions for the planner? John, have a report?
Mine is very easy. Two weeks, we'll have two more Title 41 cases coming up, one for 49 Stewart, one for 56 Stewart.
Wow.
Both by Mr. Cody. We do have some preliminary sketches and site plans that I'd be more than happy to pass out here for you to look at in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Questions for John? I do have a general comment. I want to thank the both of you. I think you've done an outstanding job of putting together these, the site plan review process and sort of pushing it through, whereas before, we kind of had a meet preliminary where it was brought forth and usually discussed. I think it, you know, it helps sort of speed up the meeting- meetings and speed up the process for the applicants as well by having the reviews done ahead of time where, you know, it's, it's really sort of thorough, sort of review on your part, so that the planning commission can make a, you know, very informed decision. So I want to thank you both for that.
You, thank you.
There's no further comments or questions with the, from our reports side of the agenda? There's now this opportunity for citizens to speak.
They will look.
They'll have to. We'll try. The next item is the announcements and other business. First off, our next meeting is November the fourth, same time and place. Are there any other announcements? Disposition of last week's minutes. Have we all had an opportunity to review the minutes from the past meeting?
Can I add a, sorry. Under case oh eight thirteen at the bottom, where it says the reason, this was the Madison Heights, decrease in the number of buildings was to allow for more area to develop and install infrastructure on the property. I also had an increased circulation capacity. I don't know. Other than that, I saw no other issue with the minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
If we can all vote on, motion to vote on last week's minutes with that amendment, all those, is there?
I'll second.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is now adjourned.